Do you have it on recording, Stephanie?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I just turned it on.
Okay, all right, good. Good evening. I will call this Jefferson County Commission meeting to order for Thursday, September 17th, 2020. Commissioner Nolan, would you recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us all?
Yes, I will. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll move right along to the approval of accounts payable. Let's see, do we have accounts payable for September 10th?
Well, Stephanie, correct me, is that $491,854.39? Is that something else?
It, it, that's right, but I think that's for September, or for, yes, for September 17th.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I only have the ones for September 17th. I only got one set.
Yeah, I said earlier, I only got the manual checks for the 17th, I think.
Okay.
What would be the date on the other one, Stephanie, do you know?
It would be September 10th. Go ahead and approve the 17th, and I'll check in, see if we have, if we have the 10th.
Okay, we'll hold up on September 10th, accounts payable, we'll move on to September 17th, accounts payable.
Well, I move that we accept accounts payable for the amount of $491,854.39.
All right. Motion before us is to approve accounts payable for September 7th, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
September 17th, I believe.
What did I say? September 7th? Okay, correction. The motion is to approve accounts payable for September 17th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I see something on my screen, and I'm assuming...
You are seeing, that is September 10th.
Okay.
And that's the accounts payable for September the 10th. I'll move approval of accounts payable for September 10th, in the amount of $188,948.28.
Second.
Second.
All right. The motion before us is to approve accounts payable for September 10th, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Manual checks, and let's see, can we get to the, there it is, there's the bottom. For September 11th, 2020.
I'll move the approved manual... Josh, go ahead, Pat.
Okay, you kind of faded out there, Josh, so I'll do it. I'll move approval of manual checks for September 11th, in the amount of $6,257.73.
I'll second that. I don't think there's any questions or discussion. The motion before us is to approve manual checks for September 11th, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're on to manual checks for September 18th.
And...
I'll move to approve manual checks for September 18th, in the amount of $475,810.43.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us is to approve manual checks for September 18th, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to payroll. For September 3rd. I'll move approval of payroll for September 3rd, in the amount of $283,250.81.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us is to approve payroll, September 3rd, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Grove, are there any changes to the agenda?
I do not have any changes to the agenda. Only I will be doing, I will present, oh, excuse me, I will be presenting the exonerations for the assessor. She had another meeting scheduled at the same time. I'll be doing those.
All right. All right, now, public comment. Stephanie?
So we have received one written public comment. If there are any attendees who would like to make public comment, you can use the raise your hand function. See a little hand icon. If you do that, I will unmute you so that you can make public comment. You can also send me a message if you'd like to make public comment, and I'll unmute you that way as well. So, again, if you're interested in making public comment, just either raise your hand or send me a chat, and you can make your regular three-minute public comment, just like we were in the meeting. I'll go ahead and read the one that we've received, and then we'll kind of wait for anyone who might be interested in making public comment.
Okay.
This is the public comment we received from David Tab. "I, David Tab, a lifelong resident/taxpayer, protest the Jefferson County Commission hindering residents/taxpayers from the recorded public comment. It is time to reopen the meetings to the public comment or stop making decisions that affect the resident/taxpayer of this county, such as appointments, purchases, projects, new and old, permits, studies, or any nonessential approvals and/or actions. It appears the JCC and the Jefferson County Administrator have yet to release the FIOA of the 12 proposals/bids connected to the proposed courthouse complex. It appears the JCC has failed to sit properly for the approval of minutes since March 17th, 2020. If the JCC was not sitting properly to approve the minutes, then the commission was not proper to hold a meeting. The approval of manual checks is just wrong. If you have a budget, just stick to it. How are you going to approve manual checks for September 18th, 2020, when you haven't listed what it's for?" Public comment. "It appears the complete agenda packet was sent this time." Hooray. Nathan Cochran, Assistance Prosecuting Attorney. "It appears that more people have joined in to legally challenge the Jefferson County Commission's last government. I guess you are having trouble throwing these other cases out of court. That is why the list continues to get larger, or is it just the new tactic of don't respond, like you have to me, case 19P69? Good to see the public taking charge of the government and not the other way around." Presentation number five, Pete Dordery, Sheriff, Governor Highway Safety Program. "Now we're, now we get more money to patrol the road that we are already required to be patrolling. The object is to ignore your job until the state government gives you a grant to perform the tasks already required to service and protect the public. Is the money going to the purchase of the next agenda item, vehicle purchase and disposal action? So what is going to be disposed of? Could it be our tax salaries? Under the special conditions of the grant, the Jefferson County Commission will be reimbursed at the rate of $138.52 per hour, and the officers can be compensated not less than two hours, not more than eight hours per shift, and not to exceed more than time and a half, the regular pay rate. So where is the money? We are supposed to be doing this with anyway? The fines collected during the special grant go where? Or is there another manual check funding mechanism? Discuss Solar Facilities Amendment and Stormwater Management Amendment. Shouldn't this be presented to the voters' ballot item, instead of our five county commissioners making a permanent requirement, a permeant requirement to all land use? The workshops are useless. The public still has no voice on the outcome. The commissioners, once again, will have the final decision. I personally did not give the commissioners that power of authority. The public reserves the right to call out the public officials to follow the required laws to ensure the constitutional rights of the public. The government's order is to stay at home, deprive the public of notice and comments without reimbursement provisions. This is affecting every resident and business owner to be responsible for all loses, including the government. It is hard to be safe with the current county commission at this time. Have a nice day."
Okay.
It doesn't look like we had any takers for public comments. Let me check my... Yeah, it doesn't look like anyone raised their hand. And again, if you have tried to raise your hand, and it didn't work, or you wanted to make public comment, and for some reason I didn't get it, please let me know that, so that I can, you know, you can email me during the meeting, and I, I get that during the meeting. So if there's an issue, let me know. But it looks like we, we have 11 attendees, and it doesn't look like anyone has indicated that they want to make public comment.
Okay. Well, you let me know if anybody pops up, Stephanie.
I will do.
All right. We're early, but we can move ahead if, let's see, you said the assessor would not be here this evening, but somebody else would present for her?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, all right.
This is ticket number 304407. It's in the 2020 personal property book in the Charlestown District. The taxpayer did not own the 2016 Toyota, but did not remove it from the assessment form. The assessed value is $5,600, and the tax amount is $127.46.
I move to approve the exoneration, ticket number 304407, as outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
All right. The motion before us is to approve exoneration, ticket number 304407. Do we have any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next one is in the 2020 personal property book in the Shepherdstown District. The applicants are Paul M. and Beth N. Beam. They did not have the 2014 Porsche Boxer or the 2013 Porsche Cayenne. The assessed value was $30,500, and the tax amount was $694.18. There is a note on here that they did get a new bill for the new cars that they purchased.
Stephanie, is there a number?
I'm sorry, I forgot to give you the ticket number. The ticket number is 315521.
I mean, we approve the exoneration for ticket number 315521 for the county administrator on behalf of the assessor.
I'll second. Okay, motion's been seconded by Commissioner Compton. And the motion before us is to approve the exoneration, ticket number 315521. Questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And that's, that, those, that's it.
Oh, only two?
Only two.
All righty. We are ahead of schedule, and I'm not really complaining, but is our next agenda item, Mr. Koger, or Chief Kogel, on the line?
It does look like he is here. Yep, he's here.
Okay. All right, Chief Kogel, can you tell us what this is all about?
Yes, ma'am, I was calling to see if I could get fees waived for some renovation work at our substation located at 100 Mission Road. Trying to do some improvements that's been needed for a while. Also to help the JCSA staffing that we have there, and plus the volunteers that's also there.
Okay, when were these renovations done?
Well, they're in the process now. We have got all the permit stuff taken care of. I talked to Becky Burns today, and let her know that I was having a conversation with you guys tonight. The work has not been complete. We had to do a little modification due to one of the Amazons backing into the wall. We had to put that back in place so we could take and get the units back inside. And all work has, has came to a halt. Everything is still open for inspections. The only thing we really got done was just put the wall back that was hit. We did find some mold, and we did remove the mold and stuff that was in the facility from a water leak. But other than that, everything else is at a screeching halt, waiting for our permits, so we can finish on.
I have a question for Mr. Kogel. Chief, what's the, I guess, what are, what's the cost of the permit fees that you're asking us to waive?
It's $559.
Okay, that's right, I do remember reading that. Well, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with that. So, I'll make the motion that we authorize, or authorize the waiver of fees as presented by Chief Kogel of the Blue Ridge Mountain Fire Company for work being done at the, at the firehouse.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us for a waiver of fees in the amount of $559 for Blue Ridge Mountain Fire Company. Do we have any questions or discussion? I'll just make one comment. As I believe I recall correctly, that this is the second time we've waived fees for you for, for planning and zoning, and that does have me concerned. Is that, am I correct, Chief Kogel, or not?
Yes, the first time was for our kitchen expansion at the main station where we do our pizzas and subs, and this is at the substation on Mission Road.
Okay.
Two different locations.
Yes, but you realize that every time you do something, you need to get your, your plans approved and pay your fees, so...
Correct. The Architect, Jeff Whitaker, done all my Architect stuff. Everything else is done. He just called me today. All the plans is done. Everything is to his specs. Me and him sat down at the planning and zoning building and went through everything. As I said, we had Amazons backing to a wall, and we've had some molds. I mean, you know, I apologize for removing mold and fixing the wall to get our trucks back inside, but, you know, we have a half million dollars of equipment sitting outside, and the way things is nowadays, you can't trust people of stealing the wheels off your vehicles, so I do apologize for that. I mean, if you guys waive the fees, it's fine. If not, I'll just pay the $559 and give my permits and move forward.
Okay. Well, the motion before us is to approve, approve the waiver of the fees. I just wanted to understand the situation better, and make sure it wasn't a continuing problem. Any other questions or discussion?
Just a quick thing, Commissioner Tab, this is Commissioner Compton. I just, I don't have a problem waiving fees for fire departments or public safety, especially in the tune of a few hundred dollars. I mean, they're providing such a benefit to the community as it is. I mean, I don't, it's the least we can do, I think, so...
Well, the, the amount we're waiving is $559. I think you said 200, but be that as it may.
A few hundred.
Oh, a few hundred, okay. All right. Well, the motion is before us to approve the waiver of the fees. All those in, any more discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief Kogel.
Thank you, guys, very much. Have a great night.
Okay, you too. Wow, we are really running early. And I don't see anything that we can stick in. Well, let's see first if, who we have online for the interviews and appointments to the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board. I do see Dr. Hetzel. Do we know if we have Kathy Johnson online?
I do not see her yet, Jane. Let me look, let me make sure she's not in the attendee list, because sometimes they are over there. No, ma'am, I do not see her on the... So we just have Mr. Hetzel.
Okay, well, if nobody objects, let's skip down to item number six. The, under new business, the possible work session, session for solar facilities amendment and stormwater management amendment. I, I believe Mr. Lorenzetti mentioned this at the last meeting.
I suggested a workshop on the, on the situation. Now that we have most of the information in, I, I know Mr., I guess, Mr. Heson and Mr. Rockwell have sent us additional paperwork, but I think a work, workshop would allow us, among the commissioners, to discuss everything and go through what's been presented thus far, and, and then make a decision whether to send it back, prove it, or ask for more information.
Okay. Yes, I've been trying to assemble all my information, and my stack's about four inches high now, so... And I've got to go back and review some of it, because I'm getting a little confused of, on some of the viewpoints. What do other commissioners feel about a workshop? And if, if you are in favor of one, when would you like to schedule it?
Well, I, I don't, this is Patsy, and I don't have an issue with having a workshop. It's probably a good way to try to sort through the information we have, and, and maybe clarify a few things that maybe we may have questions about. So I don't have a problem with holding a workshop, and as far as the date is concerned, I think the sooner the better.
Yeah.
We're running into the holiday season, and I think that we don't, you know, I think November and December is a bad time to do those kinds of things, because everybody's busy, and they, the public would have a harder time listening. I know they, they don't participate in the workshop, but they do, would have a hard time listening to try to... We don't understa, I mean, we don't understand everything about it. So I'm sure they have a lot of questions, too, so that's my two cents worth.
This is Josh. I, I agree with Patsy. The sooner the better. As soon as even next week, if that's possible. I know generally, we, after the two-week public comment period ends, that would be put on the agenda for the October 1st meeting. If we could have some sort of workshop next week, if people are available, and then keep that date at the October 1st meeting, whether we're willing to, or if we want to even have a decision on it at that point. I just, I agree with Patsy, the holidays in November and December are pretty rough.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I like that approach, Commissioner Compton, the sooner the better. And, you know, I read a lot of information, but I just need confirmation that my understanding is correct with the layman viewpoint of this whole proposal. So what are we saying, workshop on September 24th at 9:30 in the morning? Or what, what times are you all thinking about, and we don't know about staff availability either?
Which I wanted to ask, who are we bringing in?
Commissioner Tab, this is Nathan.
It's just going to be an agenda item, and that's just regular discussion.
Commissioner Hudson, you were in our, talked over, and I didn't hear all of your comments. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, it's, who are we bringing in to workshop with? Because if we're not bringing in anyone, it's just going to be a regular discussion, so why are we having a workshop?
Well, I have questions of our legal counsel, and I also have questions of our planning and zoning staff.
So it should just be on the agenda as a regular item, then, right? It doesn't have to be a workshop?
Well, I've got a lot of questions.
I think it would take more time than, than we could do in a regular meeting, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just think it would take, it's going to take longer than we would have time during a regular meeting. I mean...
Well, no, I'm fine having a special session just for it, but I'm saying to call it a work session, we should bring in special people to work session with.
But, I, um... Okay, what, what would you suggest, Caleb? I mean, what special people?
We're using the wrong terminology, then. It's call it a special session, not a work session.
Well, we normally call it a work session when we work with the Planning Commission to clarify issues that we may have regarding any topic. So, I don't care, I really don't care what you call it, but we need to have it.
Well, that's how it's clarification on my part. If we're bringing in the Planning Commission, that's who we're workshopping with. That, that's fine. I was, I was asking, who are we workshopping with?
Well, I foresaw that we would be working with staff, and so maybe there's two different ideas here. Planning Commission staff and legal counsel. Caleb, are you suggesting that Planning Commissioners participate also?
Well, I'm saying if we want to call it a work session, we have to bring in people that are there to work with us to plan a session. Otherwise, it's just a special session with the county commission.
Well...
But I, I think when you bring in a planning, I think the, the, it's a process. I think it's a process, and, you know, we need to work with, I believe, Planning Commission, Planning Commission staff and legal counsel, and then whatever decision we come to would not, it, it would not take place, it would have to take place at a different time, and not during the work session. And then we would have to decide what to do after we're clear on the questions that we have. So it doesn't matter whether you call, in my opinion, I don't, it doesn't matter whether you call it a work session or a, or a work, a work session or a special session. So it doesn't matter to me, and I think we're taking up a lot of time trying to figure out what to call, what we're going to have.
Yeah, Patty, this is Josh. To that point, did all the commissioners want to try to have this special session, work session, whatever it is, next week? I mean, Jane, you proposed the 24th, I mean, I, I'll do 9:30, I'll do 1 o'clock. It's, it's up to you all, what's easier for staff and commissioners, I guess.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I, I don't really care what you call it, and I don't care when you do it, but on the 24th, I'm pretty sure there's a BZA meeting at 2:00.
Okay.
So, just throwing that in, so it would probably need to be a morning thing if you did it that day.
Or you want to do the 23rd?
I'm not available on the 23rd. I'm actually babysitting a grandchild, but I'm available on the 24th.
Okay.
You want to do the morning of the 24th?
Yeah.
That's fine.
That sounds good. If Stephanie can just double-check with staff with a BZA meeting in the afternoon, that it's, they'll be available in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, the same, so Alex is the staff for the BZA. So that'll be on her meeting. She's also the one who is the staff for the text amendment. But I will check in if they're available.
Well, and I would like Roger Goodwin there, too, so I can understand the stormwater text amendment a little more.
Okay.
That's, that's one I don't have a lot of information on, as far as the difference between traditional stormwater and the best management practices that are proposed.
All right.
All right, so we will...
In Commissioner, and, and, you know, I, I have, you know, it's your schedule, but I would just point out, that's probably one of Alex's busiest, you know, times, is right in front of a BZA meeting. I'm just pointing that out. So I don't know if you want to find an alternate day.
So would a Friday work for everyone? Friday morning?
That's okay with me.
Yep.
Yeah, I can do Friday morning.
Okay.
I'm available.
All right. And we'll leave it up to Stephanie. Huh?
9:30?
Yes, yes. Okay, so I believe there's consensus that we will have a work session, special session with staff concerning solar facilities amendment and storm water management amendment on Friday, September 25th at 9:30 a.m. Consensus for that?
Yes.
Everybody on board?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, one one item of new business done. Now, where are we on time? We're still half an hour early. And do you see Kathy Johnson?
Jane?
Yes.
Since we're talking about solar, you have that thing from Ageson attached to the back, and it's somewhat to do with solar. Can we refer that to Nathan or whatever we do with it? I wasn't sure why, what we're going to do with his attachment.
Should it be referred to Nathan or the or the planning commission staff?
Well, he's calling it a legal matter, so I don't know.
Okay, yeah.
I did appeal or something. I I'm not sure anybody knows how we deal with that.
Well, are we giving Mr. Agenson's essentially paperwork more prudence or than other county residents? I mean, we should review all these comments equally. So I just want to make sure we're not giving special.
I'm not saying we review it, I'm saying give it to Nathan and let him review it.
We should probably do that for everything, then, if others have submitted documents as well in that regard. I think that would overburden Nathan.
Well, I think for the time being, that would be something that needed to be put on the agenda and discussed at the moment. Does anybody feel differently? Okay. I'm sorry, somebody going to say something?
No, I mean, if Commissioner Lorenzetti wants to put it on the agenda for discussion, I'll support that. Just I don't think we can discuss it until that happens.
That's my viewpoint, too, at this point.
Well, I'll ask to put it on the next meeting just for discussion whether to send it to our council.
Okay. So that's your agenda request, Commissioner Lorenzetti? Okay. All right. Well, since we are still running early, I'm not complaining. Can we do county administrators' report?
The first one I reported to you at the last meeting, we had a dispatcher who had tested positive for COVID. Not through the, she didn't contract it through the workplace, she contracted it outside of the center. However, she worked on her own shift and also worked overtime with other shifts. So she ended up exposing about 15 dispatchers. We asked all of them to be tested. We we had implemented social distancing measures in the center, but sometimes people are so, you know, they're walking around, you know, sometimes they remove the barriers that we had put up. So we did ask them all to be tested. They all did that. Some of them are getting bills for the COVID-19 testing. So working out with our insurance company as to why that would be, because sometimes it's been waived and sometimes they had charged the dispatchers. And as they come in, the dispatchers have been forwarding those bills to me because I feel as though we should pay for that. I think it would be a valid COVID reimbursement expense through the CARES Act. And we had asked them to get tested to ensure that they weren't exposing anyone else. We did, again, we followed all of the CDC guidelines for public safety employees. When we found out that we had a dispatcher who had tested positive, she was, that dispatcher was asymptomatic the entire time. And again, all 15 of our exposures tested negative. But I would like the commission's approval if I can't work it out with the insurance company to pay that for the bills for the testing that those dispatchers are receiving. I looked at them, they're around the $200 mark after you account for insurance payment. However, not all of them received them, some, the insurance covered in full, and I'm not sure why that would be when they, most of them were all tested at the the COVID tent. They were all sent to Berkeley Medical, most of them. Some of them don't live in the county and they they went to other areas. But the ones I'm seeing are actually from Berkeley Medical. So I put this on here just to get your approval so the dispatchers didn't have to wait and they didn't get, you know, kind of a late notice if they hadn't been paid, if I wasn't able to work it out. Though I will try, obviously, to work it out so that we don't have to pay. If we do, I'd like to have that authorization to do that. And again, I think we would be eligible to apply for reimbursement from the CARES Act since it's directly related to a COVID-19 expenditure. And it was, it was our public safety employees who were exposed.
Well, I make the motion that we pay for the COVID-19 testing for the E911 dispatchers.
Back in?
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that. That's, I mean, we could have, I mean, it wouldn't have been good to have all our dispatchers wiped out with.
It would not have. And we had, we've discussed from the very beginning, creating almost if we, you know, if we were, if we had dispatchers who were testing positive and wiped out, we were going to create a team that basically stayed here and kind of quarantined in the center. So we had kind of planned for that. Luckily, we didn't have to do that, but it could have been catastrophic to wipe out. And, you know, unfortunately, that individual just happened to work with not only the individuals assigned shift, but other shifts. But it ended up being fine, it could have been way worse, and it wasn't bad at all. Thank you for that, so.
Let me ask, should this motion say we pay for it if insurance doesn't cover it? If you say sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't?
I'm only paying for it if they get a bill, and I'm trying to work it out with the insurance company because I believe that Highmark is paying for COVID testing so that you don't have any out-of-pocket expenses. And so some received a bill and some did not. So I'm not sure if there's something going on with the coding, I'm not sure what's going on. I'm trying to work that out with the insurance company. But, yeah, we would only pay if they actually received a bill for it.
Okay, right. All right, any other questions or comments on the motion? The motion is to pay for the COVID-19 testing for the E91 dispatchers. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, Stephanie, I brought another item to your attention. Do you want me to explain that? Are you explaining?
And then you can explain it if you want to do that. The the date that we picked for the joint session with fire and rescue, the county commission and the ESA, I guess the ESA had decided that Mr. Foss would chair that meeting, and he's not available on that date. So fire, I think the ESA requested October 8th. I'm not sure that staff will be will be ready at that meeting because we we are still researching some issues on that. And I I think we would ask that staff would ask that you you move that date out. November 4th isn't good, maybe a bit later in November. I don't know when Mr. Foss is available, though. But Jane, you can go ahead and if you have more information.
Well, just that, yeah, it's a his work-related schedule, and he has been chosen between the ESA and the volunteer fire department to chair that meeting. So I can, you know, go back and see if there's another date that you would would have work. Or do you think it would be not a productive meeting if we just went ahead and had it and kind of got the ideas out on the table? And that probably legal and so forth will have to do more research. I mean, I don't know exactly where the discussion is going to head. Or what do you, what are your thoughts, Stephanie?
Nathan is still here because it's really, I mean, he is doing the bulk of that or coordinating with outside counsel on that. So and we talk, I did talk to Nathan earlier today, and he and I kind of feel that we we wouldn't be ready at it for an October 8th date.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I suppose the commission could always be ready to listen. But I don't think that we will, as as the commission, as you know, I'm your counsel, not the fire department's counsel. I do assist the ESA, but the ESA is your agency, so it's still an arm of what you do. So as your counsel, I don't think that we would have a very good ability to tell the fire departments what the commission's position is because we're still formulating research and things to bring back to you to so you can, you know, figure out certain things and what your position would be about certain things. So if you would like to hold a meeting to just listen to their concerns, you know, that's wonderful. But I don't think it would be productive at this early of a date as far as getting direction from you as how to to act or how they, you know, what you expect from them.
Well, I I see your point, Nathan, but I I do have to say I am very impressed that the both of these groups are starting work early on a possible combined fee. And this is the discussion, there's been lots of ideas and how to proceed with that. It better than all this blowing up in our faces during budget session is my perspective. So I'm I'm thinking, you know, more listening session at this time. We may come back with a list of things we we need answers from our staff on. I don't know, how do other commissioners feel about this?
Well, I I see where you're coming from, Jane, but I also understand what Nathan is saying.
Yeah.
So rather, I mean, and I'm perfectly willing to listen, but I have a feeling they're going to want some answers, and we're not going to be able to provide those to them at the time if we hold the meeting when they, on the the 8th of October. So and and that would mean another meeting later also, you know. So I think for efficiency purposes, you know, it would give them more time to work on their end and would give us time to work on our end and maybe wade through some of the some of the things that are really complicated. And maybe we would all be better off just to wait till we have more information. So, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to listen, but I don't know that that's going to satisfy them to hold a meeting without giving them some answers.
How do other commissioners feel?
This is Josh, I I tend to agree with Commissioner Nolan here.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Well, let me, let me ask, Jane, when you say, I think you were saying maybe 20 people. Are we talking about all the fire chiefs, all the head of ESA? And who else are we talking about here?
Well, it would be the ESA board and probably a couple of staff members. It would, I I don't know if we can limit it to or how the volunteer fire departments foresee their representation, but I think it would only be productive if we had two per fire company. But that's getting to be a pretty big group. That was my other concern about meeting in person, which is what they want to do. But there, I do think we could socially distance at one of the, you know, large meeting rooms of the firehouse. But those are details to be worked out. I will go back. I, well, I have the feeling that people, the majority, maybe not, correct me if I'm wrong, want to schedule this later when staff is more prepared. Is that the consensus of the group?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's right for Patsy. Well, I will take this back, send the message back to each group and maybe get a list of dates that when Mr. Foss is available and we can move forward to do something. But just like we don't want to leave leave the stormwater text amendments to to into vacation time, I mean, not vacation, holidays. You know, we're going to have to push ahead with this because we will be in budget before we know it. Okay, well, that's what I'll do unless there's any objection. Just take it back and ask for other available dates and hopefully, you know, have staff would be more, have more time to be prepared. Any objection to that?
No.
Okay. All righty. So do you have anything else, Stephanie?
I do not, I don't think so. Can't think of anything right now, and I didn't write anything down on my list to discuss with you. So that must, that must be all that I have right now. I do see Catherine Johnson is now here, and also the sheriff is here as well. I did see, yeah, he's still here.
Okay, and I'm looking back on farmland protection, and that's item number three is Rob Glenn on the phone? Or on the line? There he is.
There he is.
All right. Hello. Good evening. So we have everyone, we have Dr. Hudson, we have Kathy Johnson, I believe, by phone, is that correct? Stephanie?
Yeah, she is by phone, and she is, she's muted right now, Ms. Johnson. Oh, wait, I muted her, sorry. But she's still self-muted, it says.
Okay.
I think I'm muted now.
There you go.
Yeah, there she is.
So, all right, so we have three applicants for three different positions on the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board. One is for farmer-at-large, one is for a farm bureau representative, and one is a non-farmer public representative. So who who wants to go first? We know we have Kathy on the line, Ms. Johnson, so let's let's start there.
Okay.
All right, Kathy, can you tell me why you want to serve, well, serve some more on the farmland protection board?
Well, the experience this past year has been very good, learned a lot, and I've enjoyed being a part of the program and helping to move it forward. I am a farmer, and since retired from the Fish and Wildlife Service, I've been more and more farming. Instead of part-time, I've been doing it full-time. And I'd like to keep farming. I'd also like to have support with that within the county. And I think that the farmland protection program is one way that our county can keep farming present. It's hard, it would be very difficult for a few farmers to be able to continue farming if we don't have very many farmers. So we need to keep that going, and I'm hoping I can help with that.
Okay. Other questions for Ms. Johnson?
Just a question, what do you farm?
Um, well, my husband is a blacksmith, so on our farm, that that is our, it kind of subsidizes the farm. I have poultry turkeys for Thanksgiving that I sell, I have whole chickens, I have ducks that I will often sell. We have sheep and we have cows, beef.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this is Patty Nolan. Ms. Johnson, I just wanted to ask you if you, I'm assuming you've been able to make the meetings and and the the meeting time is not a problem for you?
No, it's not a problem. I have other obligations on Monday, but I'm finished in the evening, and I've been making it work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, Commissioner Tab, this is Commissioner Compton, just, Ms. Johnson, one quick question, what is your viewpoint on solar farms as it relates to preserving farmland?
My position on solar is that there is a place for it if it is within the farm structure of facilitating energy for that actual farm production. I am opposed to solar taking up farmland, good farmland, and having black and green things, black things out there. My reason for this is that I'm on the Farmland Protection Board because I don't just want to make land not have houses, I want the land to be useful for farming, I want farming to actually happen on these farms, I want people to be able to grow food and sell food locally in our community. And in solar panels, take up a lot of room, and there, they would be put on ground that could be used for producing food. So I'm on the camp that farmland protection is to preserve farmland for farming and food production, and solar farming is our word.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Johnson?
Well, I think we could get into a little bit of a time-consuming debate about that, but my question to follow up on Commissioner Compton's question is, so what do farmers do when they own a lot of land and they can't continue to farm it because they are either too old or there's no one to farm it for them?
I think there are a lot of young people who would love to farm property. If given a chance, they could go with it, they could lease that land from the farmer. The farmer has to relinquish some of the management ownership of the land and let these young people come in and do it. They don't have the money to buy property, they don't have money to own it, but they do have the energy and the youth and the strength and the stamina and everything else that is required to keep the farm going. So the farmers who are too old to farm, I challenge them to look for a way to bring in the young and the educate, to educate and to bring in some people so that the farming can continue to be viable in Jefferson County after the farmers are old and pass away.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Johnson? Okay, we'll move on, I see Dr. Hetzel. Hold on a minute, I have to turn off my phone. Sorry about that, I forgot to unplug my phone during, before the meeting. Dr. Hetzel, can you hear me? I can't hear you.
Needs to unmute himself, says he's self-muted.
Okay. Did you hear that, Dr. Hetzel, unmute yourself?
Did that do it?
Yeah, that did it. All right.
Okay.
All right. Oh, Dr. Hetzel, can you tell me why you want to be on the Farmland Protection Board?
I think the main reason is because someone asked me if I would consider it.
Yeah, I'm guilty, guilty as charged.
I have a lifetime of service to the public, and this would just be another chance to do something a little differently that I think I might be able to contribute to.
Thank you. Questions from other commissioners?
Well, I would just ask the same question, Dr. Hetzel, assuming, I'm assuming that you've been able to make the meetings and the meeting time has been agreeable with you?
They're on a Monday night?
Right.
Yeah, I think so.
Usually around 8:00.
That probably works.
All right, thank you.
Ralph, you're muted.
Dr. Hetzel, I saw your resume, and you seem to have been in the field of agriculture for quite a while. I assume you still have a like for it, let's ask you that.
Yes, definitely. I've been here on the farm for 20 years, I've been running, operating this farm for 31 years. I have a lifetime of farm work and working with farmers.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions?
This is Commissioner Compton, Mr. Hetzel, I'm gonna, same question as I posed to the previous applicant, what's your viewpoint on solar farms as they relate to preserving farmland?
You got an hour?
No, I, what about 10 seconds?
I can't tell you in 10 seconds.
Okay.
It's too complicated.
Fair enough, that's fair enough.
Well, can you give us just a short summary, Dr. Hetzel? I know it's hard.
On the solar side of things?
Yeah, if you want to.
I think the solar issue is, is many-sided, as you folks are finding out, and, yeah, it's been for some people, but what the plus side is, the land can go back to agriculture. You put a housing development or industrial development, it's not likely to ever go back to agriculture. That's the plus. The minus is it's out of action for 20, 30 years. But does provide, could provide income.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Hetzel? Next, I have Rob Glenn. You would be, I guess, a non-farmer public representative?
Correct.
Okay. So I know you're on the board now, why do you want to continue serving?
Yes, this will be my second term. I, I enjoy working on the board, I enjoy working with the director. I have an interest in land conservation, I am counsel for the Berkeley County Farmland Protection Board, so I do think I bring a level of expertise to the Jefferson County Board. I have an interest in conservation, I am on the board at the Rolling Ridge Foundation Conservancy, which, as you, as you know, owns about 1400 acres on the, on the mountain. And I do a lot of conservancy, other work in terms of land conservation. So I would very much like to continue that service as part of my public service pro bono aspect. I'm a lawyer by trade, so I feel like I'd like to give back to all the commercial development I do and, you know, offset, offset that, offset those, all the development with land conservation.
Other commissioners have questions for Mr. Glenn?
Well, just my same standard question, Mr. Glenn, I'm assuming that the Monday evening meeting is not going to be a problem for you?
Yes, it's, it's very convenient, not a problem, I just come over from Martinsburg and on my way home, so it's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Glenn, you brought up development, are you involved in any developments in, commercial developments in Jefferson County?
Uh, not at this point personally. I know my firm is working on some developments there, but whenever that comes up, I have recused my, I recuse myself from, from any activities. I think there was a recent discussion on, at the Farmland Board regarding solar issues, and I recused myself from that discussion because a member of Jackson, I work for the law firm, Jackson Kelly, and someone at Jackson Kelly is working with somebody who is, you know, seeking a solar farm development in the county. So whenever those issues come up, I, I recuse myself.
Thank you.
Other commissioners, questions? Okay, hearing none. Let's see. I'm gonna go with a, we have to do appointments that are kind of specific for the qualifications for each slot is what I want to call it. So I believe Dr. Hetzel, I believe Kathy Johnson is a member of the Farm Bureau, and so she would fill the second slot if we want to do nominations that way. Mr. Glenn is obviously the non-farmer, and then Dr. Hetzel could be at-large if anyone wants to do the nominations in that manner. But I will ask first for nominations for the Farmer-at-Large.
I will nominate Mr. Dr. Hetzel for the Farmer-at-Large.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I think I got that right.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you said nominate, do you want to move to a point?
Well, I can do either, sure, I can move to a point. Dr. Hetzel has the Farmer-at-Large position on the Farmland Preservation Board.
All right. And Ralph is okay with seconding that?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of appointing Dr. Glenn Hetzel as the One Farmer-at-Large Representative on the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board, say aye. 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 Opposed? There you have it, Dr. Hetzel, thank you for applying and look forward to seeing you at the meetings.
My pleasure.
Okay. Now, we need nominations or motion for the One Farm Bureau Representative?
I'll nominate Catherine Johnson for the Farm Bureau Representative.
Second.
The motion before us is to appoint Catherine Johnson as the Farm Bureau Representative on the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. Glad to have you back to continue on the board, Ms. Johnson. And, good. And then the third position is a non-farmer public representative, and I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Glenn.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us is to appoint Mr. Rob Glenn as the non-farmer public representative on the Jefferson County Farmland Protection Board. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Wow, we got our boards reconstituted, that's good.
Thanks, everyone, for your desire to serve on this board, we appreciate the time and effort that you, you put into this. I know it's, it's something else that you have to do, and we really appreciate it. We couldn't fill all these boards without our volunteers, and we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Now, back to our regular agenda, it is.
Lynn Fields.
She's on?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we are on, I noticed this when I was assembling my notebook, that we have two number threes on the agenda, so I didn't proof the agenda very well, but it's the second agenda item for number three. And so we have Ms. Fields. Take it away, Lynn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You can?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the first item on the agenda for probate would be the estate of Geraldine Boyard. Counsel for the estate is requesting, counsel is Bucky Morrow, Henry Morrow, is requesting that the commission compel fiduciary commissioner David D. Jarnett to prepare and present his report to the commission in order to finalize the estate. I spoke with Bucky again, and just to make sure that, what exactly he's requesting, and I gather that he just wants, I guess, a letter maybe drafted by Nathan or someone to compel Commissioner D. Jarnett to prepare and issue his report so that the estate can be finalized. So he just, I guess, wanted to put that in front of you all so that you could approve for that to, to move forward with a letter being sent to Mr. D. Jarnett.
And Madam Commissioner, I read the letter that was attached to the agenda, and I would be happy to send Mr. D. Jarnett a letter and request him to either prepare a report or appear before the commission to show cause why he could not, or, you know, if he doesn't do one of those two things in a very short period of time, we would take further steps.
Anyone else have any questions? Nathan just tried to escape.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we've been doing this for a while now, I've been doing this for a while, and I've never seen something like this happen before, so it was a little, you know, surprised, I guess. But, yeah, I don't have.
As, as are we. Not the, um.
Yeah, I was surprised as well.
It's out of character for, for Mr. D. Jarnett, very out of character.
So, you know, that's why, I mean, I can ask him to explain, you know, if there maybe is some other thing that needs to be done or something, I don't know, but.
Yeah, okay, I don't have a problem with you sending a letter, do we need a motion or just unanimous consent for that?
Before you do, I just had a question, and I assume you haven't, have we received anything from David D. Jarnett explaining anything?
And I've contacted, I've contacted office twice concerning this matter, and I have not heard back through email, or I've left and, sent an email, and I also left a voicemail message, and I have not received anything back.
And, and, you know, that is all surprising simply because Mr. D. Jarnett has performed a number of these types of services in the past, and to my knowledge, has always, you know, come through with, with whatever needed to be done.
Absolutely.
I'm certain that the COVID virus has disrupted everyone's schedule, but, you know, we just need to know what's going on.
Right.
I don't have any problem with what you're planning.
I believe, unless I hear otherwise, there's consensus for our legal counsel, Nathan Cochran, to send a letter to Commissioner D. Jarnett to to send a letter to Commissioner D. Jarnett to resolve this issue, to receive the report, or to find out why the report has been delayed. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. I'm hearing no objections from Commissioner Hudson or Compton, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. We'll move forward with that as a consensus for Nathan to follow through on that. Ms. Fields, what's our second issue?
The second issue, we need your consent for, this is regarding the estate of Francis P. Ramp. The current executor, who is Joseph Ramp, the son of Mrs. Ramp, requests permission to step down as executor of the estate for health reasons. He's asking that the secondary executor, who is named in the will also, Charis Tawney, who is also is a daughter of the decedent, be allowed to step into the role of executor. It looks like everything is up to date on the estate. There, the appraisement inventory was filed in a timely manner, and so there's nothing that's missing as far as any required paperwork. I'm assuming then that after Ms. Tawney is allowed to, to step into the role of executor, she would also file a final accounting or either a waiver or final settlement, but all parties are in agreement, and she is named as the secondary executor in the will if Mr. Ramp could not serve, so we would just, our recommendation would be to accept his resignation and allow her to step into that role.
Okay.
Well, this is Patsy, and I, I'll make that motion that we allow Mr. Joseph Ramp to step down and have Charis Tawney step into the role as executor in the estate of Francis P. Ramp.
I'll second that motion. Do we have any questions or discussion on it?
Just a question, is there any bonding problem? I assume the original was bonded.
No, because there's a will, there's a will, and it does not, none of the, neither Mr. Ramp or Ms. Tawney have to post surety on their bond, so there is no bonding issue.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The motion before us is to allow Joseph Ramp to recuse himself as current administrator and allow Charis Tawney to be appointed as the executor of the estate of Francis Ramp. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then the third and final agenda item is, I have a special, a report of special commissioner from Andy Arnold, who agreed to step into, he has resigned as fiduciary commissioner, but he agreed to take this on because he was appointed the fiduciary commissioner a while back. Basically, Frank Hill is requesting permission to step down in his role as executor and to have John Dorsey appointed as the personal representative on the estate moving forward. So we would need to get your permission for, for that to happen.
And this is for the estate of James Hatchet, is that correct?
James Hatchet, yes, correct.
Well, I'll make the motion, and you correct me if I don't.
Sure.
Don't do it correctly. For the estate of James, I move that for the estate of James Hatchet, that Frank Hill be allowed to step down as executor and that John Dorsey be appointed as the executor.
Second.
Lynn, did I get that motion correct?
Yes, mhm, yes, Mr. Dorsey would be not so much executor, but administrator, CTA, DBN. That probably only makes sense to me and Ralph.
Right, right. All right. Well, I was actually administrator for my father's estate, so I've heard that term, but not what the initials behind it, so.
Yes.
Lynn, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
In Andy Arnold's report, he mentioned a fee of 750, is that coming from the estate or is that something we need to pay?
Oh, no, it's coming from the estate.
All right, thank you.
Mhm, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, the motion before us is for the estate of James Hatchet. Frank Hill will step down as executor, and John Dorsey will be the new administrator of the estate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Hey.
All right.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You all.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Now, Nathan has a long list here, and we're not quite at 7:30, but I'm wondering if the sheriff happens to be online and we could take care of his business.
I am.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Yes, members of the commission, let me give you a little bit of good news first. I told you a long while back, we were trying to get the system ready so we could go to pay on, you know, at the tax office. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, at the tax office, and that, that has now happened. When COVID struck, we were delayed by, by months on getting the equipment in. The equipment has come in, it has, it has been installed, the, all the tax folks have been, been trained, and this week, we have now used it the first couple of days of the week. We've had about 20 people use it so far, so we think that's a helpful addition when people come and they really don't have their check, or they don't know if they have enough money, they can, they can put it on their card, and obviously, for our purposes, we get the money, and, and it seems to, seems to have helped. So I wanted to just tell you, give you an update about that. The, the two items that are before you from me tonight is, is, the first one's very simple, it's simply a renewal of the Governor's Highway Safety Grant. This is money that comes in that allows us to reimburse for overtime work for, for deputies and, and others in, in law enforcement in Jefferson and a couple of other counties. It's just simply pass-through money that we administer. There's $96,000, and so the grant papers are, are there, and I would simply ask that you give the President of the Commission authority to sign on behalf of the Commission to accept the grant.
This is Patsy, and I will make that motion to accept the Governor Highway Safety Program grant funding and to authorize the President to sign the forms.
Second.
The motion is before us. Are there any questions or discussion? The motion is to approve the grant application and resolution for the Governor's Highway Safety Grant and authorize the President to sign the necessary forms. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear everyone, but I'm assuming since no one's opposing, that it's a unanimous vote. If I'm not correct, please let me know.
So it looks like Josh has, must have dropped off, because they don't.
Okay.
They can't let us.
Well, if, we can, I guess, for record-keeping purposes, you know, in our minutes, maybe we should note that, and, yeah, just say that it was unanimous of the four commissioners that were still on the broadcast.
Yes.
Okay. Let's see.
Members of the commission, the, the second item, I had asked you about getting permission to go ahead and, and order vehicles. I told you about the delays that were there. You had asked for us to get a little more information of the vehicles that we have, that we are using regularly. We have 10 of them that have over 100,000 miles, we have seven of them with over 120,000 miles, we have one with over 200,000 miles, and so I'm, I'm asking again to, to go ahead and put the order in, because at this point, I'm guessing that vehicles would not be available until at least late February, maybe March if, if, if we're lucky. I, I, I just want to also note, because I realize there's concern, but that your, your colleagues in Berkeley County approved it at their last meeting, I believe, 29 vehicles for their Sheriff's Department.
And I forgot how many vehicles we're talking about.
Four.
Maybe four, okay. Commissioners, have any questions of the sheriff?
No, I don't have any questions, and I think Michelle explained to us that the last meeting, you know, that, that the funding is available and that it's probably something we should do. I mean, I understand concerns for the budget coming up, and, but I think, you know, I think this is something we, we need to do. So I'll make them, so we do, we need a motion to approve the funding, I don't know what the amount is.
Yeah.
Sheriff, do you have the amount?
I don't have the amount in front of me. It's the amount you approved in the budget.
Yeah, so it's already in the budget, I think.
Right.
Reason the sheriff needs permission is because we had, because of COVID, we had, yeah, we had halted all purchases, so I think he just needs your permission to go ahead with the purchases.
Okay.
I don't, the, the amounts are already in the approved budget.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll maybe that we authorize the sheriff to, to purchase the vehicles that he's requesting, and, and make a note that they, the cost of these vehicles are already in our budget.
I'll second that. We have any questions or discussion on the motion? The motion is to authorize the sheriff to order the vehicles in September, and that, just an addendum to the motion, is that the money is in, the funds have already been secured in our budget, and it's for four vehicles. We have any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, I think, except for Commissioner Compton, who's probably having technical difficulty staying connected.
I mean, I mean, thank you, and also, too early to tell you with positivity, but we got a call about our court security grant today, and it looks like it's being recommended to fully fund what we requested in a court security grant, so that obviously will take care of a lot of needs on court security that the, the county would not have to pay for, since we can get that funding through, through the state, state grant. So hopefully by the next meeting, I may be able to come back and ask you to approve, to accept, to accept that grant.
Okay. Well, as, something else, talking about grants, I think I saw the notice that we, our COPS grant was denied.
Yes.
Is, is that the grant that helps fund the resource officer at Jefferson High School? Am I remembering?
No, no, that's, that was, when we worked on the budget, we were trying to go after a COPS grant, and, and the budget you all approved would have given money in the, in the budget, I believe it's in the budget this year, that would have paid 25% of the cost of that if, if it had been awarded. So no, it's not, it's not the school resource officer grant, that, that funding is, is already sort of in, in the bag, and, and we've already gotten the funding, the increased funding approved at the last meeting from the Board of Education, so we're in good shape on that.
Okay. So remind me, I'm just curious, because I can't remember, what, what was the COPS grant going to help fund?
The COPS grant was a three-year grant funding that basically the county would pay for 25% of the cost of the officer, and the grant would pay 75%.
Oh, that's right.
And then the officers would come basically on the county full, full pay in, in year four.
Right, okay, all right, I just didn't, oh, couldn't nail down the details on that one, so, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
I believe we have completed all business except for number four, and our legal counsel, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, Mr. Nathan Cochran. So Nathan, the floor is yours.
Very well. I did want to report back to the Commission that we did have the argument at the Supreme Court regarding the annexation case. Of course, we don't know what the result of that will be. There's a very, the Supreme Court had a question about the statute and how the new statute interacts with some of the older statutes, and it, it's, you know, it's a, it's a difficult question, so I don't know exactly what they will say. The city basically has, has, I guess I would say they've abandoned their claim about the original annexation. However, they've also requested that the Supreme Court send the case back to Judge Hammer for further review, and so it's really difficult for me to discern exactly what the judge will do. I suggested that the case was dead and that the city should just start over with relationship to, with relationship to any annexation that they want to pursue. The city is essentially asking the Supreme Court for guidance or interpretation regarding the new statute, so it's really difficult to know what the Supreme Court will do with that.
Yeah.
But anyway, the argument is done, and we'll just, we're waiting on them. With regard to the rest of my issues, I would like to skip everything except for, I do need to give you a brief report, and I believe because of the nature of the report and the liability and legal issues, it needs to be in executive session, or I would suggest that it would be, but I would like to give you a report regarding some of the ambulance and fire issues, just a brief report, and then also a very brief report about the, the item related to the Historic Landmarks Commission and the Department of Interior's inquiry. I think that's on my list.
Well, I'll move, we go into executive session to receive legal counsel on items associated with the Jefferson County Fire Board, the ESA, and potential structure financial issues and any. and, um, potential structure, financial issues and any matters related there too. And then the second item to receive legal counsel on or report back is a discussion of the Department of Interior in- inquiry. Uh, that's for Historic Landmarks Commission and that's docket number, PCRNPS dash oh four dash 20.
Second.
Okay. The motion is before us to go into, uh, executive session to receive legal counsel on two items that were outlined in the original motion and they are listed on the agenda. Questions or discussion? All those in favor of going into executive session to discuss the two issues as outlined, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudson, did you vote? I didn't hear you, but you may. Okay, good. Alright. And I assume Josh is still off the radar.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, I was reading your lips, I was probably saying, okay.
I was navigating on my computer and I had minimized everything, so I couldn't, um, I need to get, I need to get Nathan the link to the executive session.
Okay, so. We close out of this?
I'm gonna need a five-minute break before we get on the executive session.
Okay, so we will close out of this, go to executive session, and then will we have to come back to this to adjourn?
Yes, you will.
Okay, alright. Alright, so five-minute break and come back in executive session.
Stephanie.
Yes.
You've taken care of Morgan?
Yes, well, I emailed him and asked him Sandy offered to drop it off. So I did email him and ask him to coordinate with Sandy or I could mail it or he could come pick it up. So I did, I did do that today.
Okay, for some reason I only have two photos on, well, there's Patsy and I don't know why mine's not up. But that's all right, let's see, let me look webcam, maybe I've, huh, oh, it changed it. All right, there we go, there we go, all right, and is Caleb on?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, all right, and so move we reconvene in regular session. All right, all those in favor of reconvening in regular session say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, is there any other business that needs to come before us? I believe we're done, but I could have missed something.
Well, it looks to me like we're finished, so I move we adjourn.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is to adjourn this evening's meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, good evening. Good evening. Happy birthday, Nathan. We could sing to you, but that might be a little scary.
Thank you, that's, that's fine. I have a neighbor who was saying, you know, if Peter Soska was here, he would sing to me in Russian.
I'll call him tomorrow and see if he's available.
Maybe Ralph could do that.
At my forum the other night, Peter was there and he was trying to be in charge.
That's not surprising, so, okay, all right, good night.
Good night.